Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burghart.
Here.
Don Cummings.
Here.
Judy Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Jim Reddick.
Here.
We have a full house tonight, ladies and gentlemen. We begin our council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I'd like to ask Mr. Scott Roy, please lead us in the pledge. Did I startle you, Scott?
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Item 3A, ladies and gentlemen, is a public hearing on the proposed establishment of the City of Geneva's Special Service Area Number 33 and the levy of taxes on property within the special services area for the purpose of paying the costs of providing special services in and for such special services area. Is there a motion to find out who the hell wrote that?
So moved.
So moved.
This is to open the public hearing, of course. Alderman Marx makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open. If anyone on the council has a question, or in particular, anyone in the audience who is here for this particular matter, now is your chance to either ask a question or make a statement regarding this issue.
Mr. Mayor, this is a backup special service area, which is typical of special service areas created to provide financial security for drainage facilities within new subdivisions. So, the onus will be on the property owners, their association to maintain it, and if not, then this special service area tax can be imposed.
Seeing and hearing no questions or comments from the audience, nor from the council, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Kilburg.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Item 3B is to proclaim June 18, 2018, as Board and Commission Recognition Day. This is very appropriate, since we are recognizing members of our boards and commissions for their years of service. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Burghart. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is so proclaimed. Thank you very much. Item 3C is to recognize outgoing city board and commission members. This is the fun stuff, folks. There are a number of folks who we are recognizing this evening, several of which we will recognize in abstentia because they could not make it tonight. Tristika Kach from the Cultural Arts Commission served from 2011 to 2018. We certainly thank her for her service. Mr. Dan Janis served on the Strategic Plan Advisory Commission from 2014 to 2018. He also served as treasurer for one term. I have a feeling he's hanging out with Hannah. Let's see, Mr. Steve Collins from the Historic Preservation Commission served from 2016 to 2018. He's unable to attend. So, for those who are present this evening, we're going to begin with our good friend Brian Beveridge from the Strategic Plan Advisory Commission. Where's Brian? Brian? Good Lord, man. Bring the whole gang up.
Hey, hi.
Yeah, who's this handsome devil?
This is Henry.
Henry, what a great name. And who's the young lady?
That's Cora, and it's my wife Lindsay.
Hi.
Your daughter's name is Lauren?
It's Cora.
Oh, Cora. Forgive, how old's Cora?
She's almost six months.
Bad.
And the other two are with my in-laws.
At the pool.
I think I know why you're resigning from the... And Henry, how old are you, man? I'm going to guess...
Almost two.
Almost two.
Almost two? Awesome.
How old are you?
So, Mr. Beveridge, thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
Anything you'd like to share with us regarding your experience, or wisdom you'd like to impart for the millions watching?
Well, I learned a lot. More than I thought. I mean, SPAC does an amazing job, and they are involved in a lot of things, and, you know, they're going to continue to do great things.
No question. What did you find most surprising about the volume of information and issues and what have you?
The volume of info...
I would assume, it's kind of like sipping from a fire hose, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely. Every, every month it was like that, so, yeah, it was intense sometimes, so...
What's your advice to those who might succeed you?
Be on time.
Otherwise, you'll be appointed to something?
Well, you miss a lot. Just if you miss five, 10 minutes, you miss a lot. So, I would be there, be present, be active, and just keep, keep your head moving forward.
That's good advice. Would Cora like to say anything?
I guess not right now. She's pretty talkative, but she must be just in awe of everyone, so...
Sure. We're in awe of her and all of you. Mr. Beveridge, if you would not object, I do have a parting gift.
Oh.
Alderman Reddick said it's a bag of diapers. This is actually a picture of the city council. It's a scratch and sniff. Sorry, Henry.
(inaudible)
Henry, pleasure meeting you. Stranger danger, huh?
Should we say hi?
He's not sure.
He's not so bad.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark Brought. Now, this, folks, this is unusual. Tonight, the Broughts have brought people from all the way from California.
That's how important this is.
Just to experi... They've never, they've never been so happy to see him leave.
Yeah.
And they're staying at the Harrington. And they came in not necessarily because of Swedish days, but certainly they get a front row seat to the excitement. Do you want to introduce your special guests, Mr. Brought?
Well, first, my wife, who's here, Patty. And then we have my mother and father-in-law, Dick and Annette Ernsting. They're from a lot of places, but right now, most recently Fort Wayne, Indiana.
Ah-ha.
And then Kevin and Michelle, my brother and sister-in-law from, where exactly in California?
Saratoga.
Saratoga, so, Valley.
That's horse racing country, isn't it?
Um, no, no.
No, it's like Silicon Valley, like stuff.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, they're doctors, so you know.
Oh, are you doctors?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Good ones, too.
What kind of physicians are you?
She does gastroenterology and I do...
Oh, wow. MDs, DOs?
MDs.
MDs, wow. So, what happened to you?
I know. I mean, I'm just lucky to be breathing right now, right?
So, Brought, I think, served on SPAC from 2010 to 2018, chairman from 2011 to 2017. I think this council would agree with me that, for those of you who are unaware, we have a strategic planning session that the city council hosts each November. And during that planning session, the chairman of the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee attends, Mr. Brought attends. And Mr. Brought is one, he is not a shrinking violet with respect to speak, speaking passionately, corralling the different interests together, and, and being pointed yet respectful in what needs to be done. So, it was a delight to have you on board. And I know that the council probably echoes what I do, is like, thank God you're gone.
Yeah.
So, it's like, but the floor is yours. I want to hear from you. What do you love most about...
I really enjoyed my time. And you asked Brian, you know, I am very grateful for the opportunity, because you learn a lot. And I kind of came in wanting to help and not knowing how to help. I actually was a treasurer, too, and vice chairman, you know, so, trying to find a way to make it work. And then, and, and just in working with Stephanie, and I just found out how much I didn't know. And it was like amazing, every meeting, like we would try to, we can't do this, or we can do that. We, I just was amazed at the... I didn't know how government worked, city, state, local, how it all seemed to be one big thing before I came in. And now you're like, aha. Now you really see, kind of peel back the onion a bit. And that was really interesting for me. And to work with a lot of great people in this room that are dedicated, you know, to Geneva was, was, because it is a great, great town. And there are a lot of great people that want to help. We're fortunate to have, be able to pass the baton. We've got a lot of great people behind us. You know, we self-impose term limits, you know, so that there's always better, smarter people behind you. So, I think we're in great shape. I appreciate the opportunity. Like I said before, I'm not done. Just taking a pause right now. It's been a while, eight years, whatever. But I enjoyed it all. I learned a tremendous amount, and felt like I make a little bit of a difference, so...
Oh, indeed. No question about it.
Yeah.
Free time, what will you be doing with all this free time you have?
Hmm, what's that? Yeah. Well, my son, they're, they're out in, they're, we didn't bring the kids with us.
I noticed.
They're frequenting, you know, spending money, right, at the ice cream stores right now.
Ah.
So, my son plays travel baseball for Geneva, of course, and travel soccer. And my daughter's not here as well. She's a club team swimmer for, for St. Charles, but more importantly, Rosory, three-time state champion, Rosory.
Yeah, I've heard of that.
Right? So, that's what Patty and I do in our free time, is going to Omaha, Nebraska, and Ohio, and, you know, putting thousands of miles on your car. And there isn't much free time between work and that, but wouldn't change a thing.
And you're still selling trucks and stuff?
Still selling trucks. Economy's great, selling more trucks.
Oh, it's good.
Yeah.
Good news, man.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. So, how much thanks do you owe Patty for putting up with all the time away?
A ton, because it's all those, hey, I'm, gotta go to another meeting. What? It's, seems like it's more than once a month. Well, sometimes it's more than once a month because we've got planning, and it's, well, it's not going to be done at 8:30. It's going to go a little later. And so, it's a, it's a big thing, because it's a tough time at night, you know, especially when the kids were, were little, or that year, not like Brian, obviously, is well aware of. You know, you've got that window, or like you're trying to get a lot done, right, between being home from work and kids going to bed, and, and, you know, those times that I wasn't there for that. So, Patty helped me out a lot, so. It's good that she supported me on it, so...
City Council, any questions or comments for Mr. Brought?
Here?
Yes, Alderman Bruno.
Thanks so much for your service. I think in the, what I've seen over the last few years, where you've distilled some of our sometimes ill-defined and wide-ranging strategic planning with you and, and the rest of the commission, I think has been really very useful for, for this body here. You know, I, yeah, I came in, you know, to city service through one of the commissions, and I think I, I fully appreciate how you can connect with the city and what it all does. And you see all the machinery, and, you know, I, you know, I appreciate your service, and I hope, I hope other people look to, to serve, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Doctor, doctor, anything you'd like to say?
We appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah.
Out in California.
Yeah, well done.
So, are you going to dinner after this tonight, or you're just going to find the kids somewhere? We ate dinner early so we could be here.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Wow, you guys really live a boring life.
Yeah.
That's amazing. Well, we're very proud of you. We have a little gift bag as well.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah. This is actually a picture of Brian Beveridge.
Oh, I've already got one, so... Have a set. I'll put the other one on eBay.
Well, this is dinner for at four at the Mill Race.
Oh, oh.
So, you're going to enjoy that, yeah. No waiting.
Yeah. I'm familiar with that place.
Oh, yeah, you are, right in the hood, isn't it?
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The final recognition this evening is of a gentleman who has served extraordinarily well for an extraordinarily long time. Mr. Roy, do you want to join us at the podium, sir?
(laughing)
He was also voted most enthusiastic in his high school class.
(laughing)
Apparently homeschooled. September of 1993, you were appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yep. Mayor Odly.
Mayor Bill Odly, yep. You served as acting chairman when then-chairman Jim Kautz stepped down from the commission.
Hmm.
You assumed the chairman's position in December of 2000, serving seventeen and a half years in that role. During your tenure, it's estimated that you have attended nearly 275 commission meetings.
Oh, my.
Totalling more than 30 hours per year on average, which equates to at least 750 hours over nearly 25 years of service.
Wow.
Ode to get that time back, huh?
(laughing)
It's an extraordinary commitment, and we're delighted. And I don't know if the council or the community as a whole knows what's next in your life. Do you want to share that?
I don't think they do.
I know. This is, this is incredible.
My family's been wanting to move to Florida for probably two and a half years or so, and, so I've been looking for about two and a half years. And, and in May, I put an application in, and, and got a job, and started really quick, July 9. And, and one of my daughters lives in Florida already, and we're moving to Winter Park, Florida, which is a suburb of Orlando. And my daughter and other people have told me that if you took Geneva, Illinois, and you moved it to Florida...
Oh, wow.
It would be Winter Park, Illinois. They have a historic district, and it's, it's very quaint, and lots of neat architecture and stuff like that. Train goes right through the middle of it, and, so, beautiful community.
So, you told me that you got the job offer on Saturday, you accepted on Sunday, and you're moving there next week.
I am.
So, I, I have this vision of...
So, I hope, I hope there's not a gift certificate in that bag.
Well, it's, it's for Kentucky, so it's...
(laughing)
But why don't I have this feeling of a Chevy Chase trip down to Florida?
It could be. It could be.
You're driving with the trailer behind you.
Uh, my wife is driving with the trailer. I've got a little Honda Insight. I can't pull anything. And I can't really carry much, much in the, in the back either. So, I'm just following her.
Wow. I think you have one of the coolest emails around, too.
What is that?
The Life is Good.
Yeah.
Good, what is it? Good something?
Good Life Real Estate.
Good Life Real Estate, yeah. And you always sign everything, "Life is good."
Yeah.
Is life still good?
It's getting better.
It's getting, I bet it is.
It's, it's five degrees, five degrees cooler down there right now, and...
I bet it is. I bet it is.
And I'm thinking in December, it will be very nice.
Perfect. What words of wisdom do you leave for those who...
I didn't know I had to talk, but I guess my words of wisdom is probably not to you guys, but to the people behind me, and, and it's, you need to volunteer. This is a fantastic community, and there's a lot of stuff going on, and, and this is not any place that's stagnant. And, I mean, it's moving, it's changing, and you should be a part of it. So, I would just say, volunteer wherever you can, and, and it'll be a benefit to you and the community at the same time.
When you stop and think a quarter century, does it strike you as...
I've only, I've only been married 27 years.
Seriously?
So...
Wow.
So, it's just another marriage, I guess.
And you're leaving this one.
(laughing) My other wife is coming with me.
That's a smart move. May I present you with a little something?
Sure.
Council members, any comments for Mr. Roy? Alderman Bruno?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Scott, we chatted briefly, but when I came on HPC, you were already an old-timer, but...
I was.
You know, when, when I think of the commissions, you know, what the downtown identity brings to Geneva...
Right.
I mean, you've overseen a lot of stuff, and I've always appreciated your calm leadership as chair when I was there. So, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right. No one else knows me.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your surgery.
(laughing)
I whisper to the chairman that we, our vote in closed session tonight is to expend funds for the Scott Roy statue. It's going to look beautiful in Batavia. Feel free to sneak out if you need to. Folks, we move on to item 3D, as in David. 3D is to consider mayor's appointment of Mr. Chuck Miles and Mr. William Malecki to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Maladra. Mr. Miles could not be with us this evening. He is traveling on business, but Mr. Malecki is with us. Mr. Malecki, do you want to join us at the podium? And, and I, we should also announce a new father.
Yes, new father, three weeks Saturday, so...
So, tell us about your beautiful child.
A little girl. Name is Annika Elise. Annika because my wife is Swedish, mostly Swedish, so it's fitting.
It's a big week.
It is. It is. So, if you, if anybody wants to borrow her for the parade, you know, feel free, you know, she might cry, but...
Now, you know these are, these meetings are preserved forever. So, when Annika goes to prom, she's going to see that statement.
Yeah, that's good.
That's good.
Yeah. No, yeah, it's been exciting. I'm not a young dad, so it was one of those things where it was, you know, you're not really sure, but, you know, here I am, 45, a new father, and couldn't be happier.
Life is good.
It's exciting. Yes, it is.
And you're stepping up to serve on the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee?
Yes, yes. And hearing from the two gentlemen that are, you know, stepping down, I'm not sure what I'm getting in for, but with a fire hose of information that's going to be coming my way, it's a good thing, because I'll be just having a lot of time sitting at home, you know, rocking in the rocking chair, and I'll get a lot of reading done.
Absolutely.
So, no, I'm really excited for the opportunity. I know a lot of people in Geneva. I've worked with some of the people here, and Roger lives in my neighborhood. So, yeah, I couldn't be happier. So, it's, I'm really grateful for the opportunity.
Wonderful. Any comments or questions from the dais, from Mr. Malecki? We have a motion, we have a second, a voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of appointing Mr. Malecki and Mr. Miles to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is Annika...
(applause)
Will your daughter wait up for you when you get home, Billy, or no?
What's that?
Will your daughter be waiting up for you?
I told my wife I'd be home because she was crying pretty good when I left. So, I said, I won't be long, so...
You're in big trouble, big guy. That's awesome. See you, man.
(inaudible)
Item 3E is to welcome our new Public Works employees, Nick Pizzuti, Kirk Ghul, and Mike Devaney. So, who wants to go first? Babica.
Mr. Mayor, it's my honor and privilege to introduce Nick Pizzuti, alignment with the electric utility. Nick?
Nick, how are you, man?
Good, how you doing?
Good, welcome.
Yeah, thanks.
This is the city council.
How you doing?
(laughing)
It's about the whole town of Maple Park right here.
So, tell us about yourself. Where are you from? Where do you hail from?
I'm from Auburn. Went to Canlin.
Canlin Knights, man.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a good year this year in baseball.
Did they? I don't, I don't follow anymore. I was, I, I just moved to Maple Park, like back in the area, for this job from Sycamore.
Oh, no kidding.
So, I was rooting for Sycamore for a while, yeah, just to make my family mad and stuff.
Do you go to, do you ever go to the Lowdy?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm walking distance. I made sure that...
Isn't that something?
Yeah, it's a cool place.
Yeah, some Geneva kids own that joint.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I didn't know that.
It's awesome, man.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
Yeah, it's a cool place. They're opening up, the same owners are opening up a brewery in Auburn.
Yeah, isn't that wild? They've really, they've, they've done extraordinary things over there.
Yeah.
Really, and they're young, young guys.
Nice place.
It's awesome, man.
Yeah.
Wow. You, you, it says here you have a son.
Yeah, I do. He's two and a half.
Oh, man.
Yeah, yeah.
You should have provided advice to Mr. Malecki before he left.
I know, I was going, but...
And what's your son's name?
Cohen.
Cohen?
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, he's...
Awesome.
So, yeah, we had a good day on the boat yesterday.
Yeah, you said you were out at Illinois River?
On the Illinois River, yeah.
Open your LaSalle, Peru, and Ottawa and all that stuff?
Yep, yep. They got a lot of beaches over there, so it's nice, yeah.
Seneca, I think you...
Yeah, that's where we put in, yeah.
You're a safe boater?
Yeah. Sure, sure, yeah. I mean, my boat hasn't turned to the Titanic yet, so we're...
That is good.
Yeah, we're, we're still floating.
So, you completed your apprenticeship in 2017?
Yeah, just got done in October. I was on the contractor side, working for Intran and Mead and stuff like that.
Oh, for Mead, a lot of big boys, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, how, how did you pursue this career originally?
Um, quickly, I, after college, I went to Western for a while, Illinois. I didn't know what I wanted to do, so I joined the Marine Corps. Well, during, during training, before I even, before everything was even done, I shattered my leg during training.
I'm sorry.
I still have all the plates and screws in there, so, my buddy, who was an apprentice at the time, a local 196, he kind of gave me the heads up that they were hiring. And I, I applied. Totally forgot about applying for it. Eleven months later, I heard back. I almost moved to Arizona. And I heard back, and I went for the interview, and I, I got it, so. It's been a wild ride since. It's a crazy job.
Took us 11 months to call you back.
Yeah, I'll, no, not, no, I'll bet, yeah.
I know it was.
Local 196, yeah. Since then, I've seen some cool things, so...
I bet you have.
Yeah, I was at Hurricane Irma last September.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, it was pretty wild, yeah, it was cool. I was there for almost a month.
Where did you live?
Uh, we were staying in hotel, I mean, uh...
Oh, you were, okay.
Yeah. They had us go down there before the hurricane hit. They shut down Disney, so all the linemen were in the Disney resorts. And then, once the hurricane hit, they dispersed the linemen throughout the state, and we were, uh...
Oh, no kidding.
Our company, I, at the time, worked for PMI, right at Batavia. And where were we? We were right Hollywood, right between Fort Lauderdale and Miami.
Right near the airport there.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's where we were at, yeah, for about a month. It was something else.
It is something, man.
Yeah.
So, you ready for Swedish days?
Yeah, ready as I'll be.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Have you been before?
Uh, yeah, just in high school and stuff, you know.
Well, it's a lot different now.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to, I guess we'll see. Check it out this weekend.
Absolutely. Any comments or questions for our, not really new, but...
Yeah, it's been about a month or so.
Exactly. So, you got everything under your belt, "Life is good"?
Everything's great, yeah. Can't complain.
Awesome.
Yeah.
It's going to cool off for you this week, too, which is nice.
Yeah, it's nice. It was a little, it was a little hot today out there.
Oh, my God, I could imagine. We're delighted to have you on board.
Yeah, I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next up, it's my honor to introduce Kirk Ghul. Kirk is a maintenance employee within Next up, it's my honor to introduce Kirk Ghoul. Kirk is a maintenance employee within the street division, works for Nate, Superintendent Landers.
Mike, no, Ghoul, man, Kirk, dude. Says here you worked for RSS Concrete for twelve years.
Oh, yeah. Yep. My best friend owns that company.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
What did you do there?
Uh, everything, wall crews, so foundations, flat work. We used to get the contracts for all, the whole neighborhood, build the whole neighborhood, so.
No kidding?
Yeah, did that since I was nineteen, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
And you spent a year working for the Village of Montgomery?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right before I came here, yeah. Started there, it was almost a year to the date till I got this job, yeah. I didn't know where Montgomery was till I got that job.
Who does?
Yeah. Yeah.
And you've been with us now just for two months?
Almost two months, yeah.
Almost two months.
Yeah.
So far, so good?
Yeah, I love it. I, born and raised in St. Charles, so I know.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
So, you're a saint?
You know, North Star.
You're a North Star?
Yeah.
One of the first classes?
Yeah, first four-year class.
First four-year class, no kidding. So, you were, you, you weren't one of the mold children?
No, I didn't come from the east, no.
No, that's good.
That was a good time, because we split schedules, four hours a day, yeah.
It was a good gig, wasn't it?
Yeah, four hours a day was good.
Oh, my God. What's your fondest memory of St. Charles? Moving out? No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, maybe it's moving out. I just moved into Geneva a year ago, and.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, just downtown over here, so.
Wow. So, now, when the power goes out, you knew who to call, the guy that's right back there in Miski?
Right there, yeah.
That's cool.
But, yeah.
We're delighted.
I love it. I like, so.
Any comments or questions from the dais? Now, you know, because you're here this evening late, gentlemen, you don't have to start till noon tomorrow, so enjoy your morning.
I gotta, I gotta start at eleven tonight.
Ooh, what for?
Uh, split, split shift, because of Swedish days.
Really?
Yeah.
Good God. Shucks. Well, good luck with that.
It's all right, don't worry about it. It's fine.
If you want Dean Kilburg's cellphone, you can text him anytime. He stays up late.
Okay.
Welcome aboard, man.
All right, thank you.
Glad to have you.
And then, the final entry for tonight is Mike Devaney. He is in the electric utility, works for Superintendent Wright.
Devaney?
Yep.
How are you, man?
Good, how are you?
A graduate of Geneva High School.
Yep, a Viking. Yeah?
Pretty cool, man.
Very cool.
What's your fondest memory of Geneva High School?
Uh... Probably baseball. Used to play baseball, yeah.
What position?
Third base.
Third?
Yeah.
That's a heck of a field they have now, isn't it?
Yeah, it's really nice.
Oh, my goodness.
It's a lot different than when I was there.
Isn't it different?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's gorgeous.
Mm-hmm.
You could have been somebody.
I know, right?
With the field like that.
Probably, you never know.
Now, according to this, you went to a school called University of Iowa?
I did, yep.
Majored in biomedical engineering.
Yep, yep. Got my bachelor's degree in biomedical engineering, graduated in twenty-ten.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Why biomedical engineering?
You know, when I was trying to decide, it just, my dad took me out there for the engineering day. I always wanted to be an engineer, you know, big in math, big in science. And I'd never really heard of, you know, biomedical engineering, and we had, you know, we spent an hour with each little discipline that they had there, and.
Sure.
You know, biomed was the first one we saw, and I just absolutely fell in love with it. It was just so interesting, you know.
Wow. Do you still dabble? Can you dabble in biomedical engineering?
It's been a while, it's, it's been a while, but, but, yeah, you know, I, I find the healthcare industry, you know, very interesting, and.
Yeah.
You know, it's something that's, I've always kind of been passionate about since, but.
That's cool, man.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, tell us about climbing school. You, you completed your climbing school in May of twenty-eighteen.
Yep, I got back three weeks ago. It's, it's a three-week climbing school in Midway, Ohio, just outside of Dayton.
Yeah.
And what we do is just a crash course in, you know, how to be a lineman. No, well, there, there was, there was.
Break that from the record.
There was a lot of crashing down there, but, you know, it was tough, but the first week, we pretty much, you know, up and down a pole, you know, learning the basics. You know, second week, go up, build crossarms, and, you know, really kinda get all the electrics, electricity basics kinda thrown at you, so. It was, it was a real good experience. I learned a lot, and definitely glad I had the opportunity to go do it.
What's the, what's the total weight of all the equipment you're carrying when you scale a pole?
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly, but, you know, maybe thirty pounds.
Really?
Yeah. Maybe a little more, I don't, I could probably know a little bit more, but.
Council members, anything for Devaney, the greatest third-base person? How long you been onboard?
Uh, almost eight years. It'll be eight years in October.
So, you're switching over to the lineman?
Switching over, yep, yep. Did seven years in streets. I actually did, while I was, while I was.
You did seven years in streets?
I did four summers with the water department while I was out at Iowa, so.
Working with Mike Martins?
Uh.
Or down at the?
No, Public Works, under Randy Miller and Bob.
Oh, yeah, oh, my gosh, Randy, yeah.
Uh-huh, yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, very cool.
So, you're no, you're no newbie?
No, no, not at all, so.
What's your words of wisdom to the new guys?
Uh, be careful plowing down Caneville Road.
Yeah, my box is.
There's a couple of their boxes that didn't fall off pretty easily.
I like when you laugh and giggle, too. It's funny. Anything from the council? You still play ball, Devaney?
No, no, not anymore.
You don't play softball or anything?
No, no.
Well, we're delighted with your switch.
Yeah, thank you.
No pun intended. And congratulations. We hope you enjoy the new position.
Thank you.
I'm certain you will.
Yeah, of course.
Be safe. I think I heard.
Definitely.
Mr. Kilburg say that, so it's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, the council will take a vote. Who you liked best? What? Nope? Item four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be acted upon with one motion.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes that motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Marks. Any questions or comments regarding the omnibus agenda? Seeing none? Hearing none? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes unanimously. Ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero abstentions. We skip to item number ten, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration this evening.
Total bills for payment are three million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and seventy-six cents.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in our packets and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman McGowan makes the second. Questions or comments regarding the bills as presented? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
The motion to pay the bills was passed unanimously. Ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero abstentions. Committee of the whole items of business were all considered under the consent agenda. We skip to item thirteen, new business and public comment. I know we have someone here for public comment on new business, so I'd be happy to recognize the young lady. Yep, now's your time. Welcome.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
My name is Sheila Spitzer. My husband and I own Wet Nose in Geneva Commons. We opened the store about sixteen years ago. And when we opened, it was when Geneva Commons opened, and I remember thinking how cool it would be to allow clients to be able, not only to shop with their dogs in our store, but also to shop in the other stores within the shopping center. So, we did our due diligence. We talked to the mall manager, proposed our idea. They were thrilled beyond belief of implementing it. And so, it's been sixteen years now where our shopping center's been pet-friendly, with the understanding that we call every store every spring and ask them if they would still like to be pet-friendly. They have the choice of whether they would like to participate or not. If they choose to, we put them on a flyer that we hand out to our clients when they come in. We put them on our website. Geneva Commons puts them on their website. It's purely voluntary. In the sixteen years we've been doing this, I talked to Kathy Charhat, the mall manager, earlier today, and she says she's had a total of four people that have complained over the sixteen years. One most recently said that it was against city ordinance to allow animals in public facilities. So, my question, or my, my hope, is to have that changed or removed, to be with the times. We're surrounded by several shopping centers that are pet-friendly, and brick and mortar is suffering tremendously right now with internet sales and Amazon. I think that we, as a community, need to do our due diligence to encourage people to spend their money in locally and support brick and mortar, and not discourage them from doing so. I've had a handful of clients that have come to me directly that have said that they will no longer shop at Geneva Commons because they won't accept their pet on the vicinity, which I think is sad. So, that's what I'm here for.
Thank you. I know you corresponded with Alderman McGowan, and I believe Alderman Rodecky.
I, I personally did not.
No, okay.
No, I believe that somebody else did.
Yes, I believe somebody else did.
There's been quite a bit going on on social media. Somebody else did, and like I said, I spoke with Kathy Charhat at a couple of different occasions, but I spoke with her earlier today. Her stance is the reason that they have said that Geneva Commons now is no longer pet-friendly is simply because of the way that the ordinance reads. They don't want to be noncompliant. If it was her choice, she wants the center to be pet-friendly. She thinks it's definitely an asset to the, to the shopping center. I think it's a huge draw. We get a lot of people that come from far away that specifically shop at Geneva Commons because they can shop with their pet, or even if they are running errands or taking their pet to the vet, they can do a quick stop in the store because they can bring their dog in, not leave them in a hot car, or for fear tie them to a post where they'll get stolen, so.
Council members, I believe the direction tonight that we are seeking is if there is consensus from this council to direct city staff to review the elimination of the ordinance as referenced in our code, then we will certainly direct staff to do so. I know for a fact, and as you and I were chatting earlier, oftentimes, some of these ordinances are, quite frankly, out of date. There's several ordinances that have been on the books for years that if there's a complaint, enforcement is pursued, but oftentimes, it's only pursued when complaints are registered. So, I certainly sympathize with Ms. Charhat and the folks over at the Commons, but.
And my understanding is that the ordinance was put in place over forty years ago.
Right, nineteen seventy-five, yeah.
And again, I mean, Geneva Commons as a shopping center has been functioning beautifully with this in place. The only reason it now is becoming an issue is because one person has brought it to the attention of the mall manager. And, and incidentally, not that this is relevant, but it kind of is relevant, too, the way that the ordinance reads, my husband and I technically can't allow pets to come into our store either, and we're a pet boutique, which just, to me, just doesn't, it just, it doesn't make sense because we don't offer grooming, we don't have a veterinarian on staff, and we don't do kenneling. So, we, we technically are in violation now, too, and have been for sixteen years.
Well, thank you for churning yourself in. Officer, please.
Well, you know, if it's, if it's any consolation, this was brought up about two months ago, where they, Kathy had approached us, and she said, just giving you a heads up that I'm sending out this memo and that we're gonna do this, and my husband says to me, he goes, shh, don't say anything. See, he did. He was just like, don't let a sleeping dog lie.
Come on up if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak. We'd like to have you join us at the.
In violation of the spirit of the code, because the code allowed for facilities.
Correct.
That really required for pets to come in to be actually a part of that business model, and our business model is no different in that respect, that we, in order to be successful, have to allow pets to come in.
Absolutely.
For a whole host of reasons. And I also want to interject, I don't want to speak for Sheila, but we're really asking, I think, that businesses are allowed to make their own decisions with respect to this issue.
That's true.
From the council, Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. The individual that first brought this up posted a couple of things on social media to ask to contact your local alderman with your thoughts about it, and actually seeking support for the position that you have. And interestingly enough, and I don't know what Alderman McGowan got, but I only had two responses to that, and both of them asked that I read their responses since I weren't here. They would like to send it into the record, so since we have your comments, I thought I would read their comments as well, too. The first one is from Roxanne and Dick Moy. Their email says, additional thoughts. Modifying the ordinance increases the liability to the store owner should the pet accidentally cause injury or harm to others. Not only is the dog owner subject to a lawsuit, but the store owner can be held, can be added as a liable party because it occurred on the premises of the store. An example is adults are more cautious before approaching a dog, but children are not. They have a tendency to approach dogs as a playmate. If they get hurt or bitten by the dog, the potential for lawsuits or recovery of medical expenses is a potential issue for all. If you allow dogs, then how can the ordinance regulate other pets or breeds of dogs that are pit bulls? Question mark, question mark. Changing the ordinance should involve the store franchise owners in the mall. Might, might be worthwhile to confer with our village attorney as to the potential liability facing premises owners when they open their businesses to pets, and if the ordinance is changed, does the village have liability, too, because it allowed pets to be on store premises? Also, will this affect the restaurants that are part of the mall? Again, we are not against dogs, as we have several friends with dogs when that we are around quite a bit, that we have walked. Our concern is a matter of safety in a crowded store and hygiene of the pet. There is a time and a place for pets, but when people shop, they should not have to be concerned about pets in stores. The pet owner is the only concern, the pet owner is only concerned about her personal comfort, not the impact it has on others, which is sad. And then I had another one sent to me, and I think, uh, this one was also posted on one of the websites, and they had asked that this be read. I'm not the individual who complained, but would like to say there are two sides to this issue. As someone who suffers significant allergies to animals, I do not wish to encounter them in stores where I shop, and especially not in eating establishments where I would spend perhaps a longer amount of time. I have no problem with pets if they were to be tied up outside the store or restaurant, but not all pet owners are willing to do this. If I know I'm going to be at a friend's home where there are pets, I can take an antihistamine. They do, however, cause me to become drowsy, and I'm reluctant to drive after taking the medication. I certainly do not want to pop a pill every time I want to go shopping or out to eat, just in case someone might bring their pet into the establishment. While Mrs. Kingfield's dog may be friendly and well-behaved, I have run into other pets that are not. While I am not unsympathetic to pet owners, I ask the same consideration to those of us who suffer from allergies or asthma. Those are the two they asked me to read. Thank you.
May I address the allergy issue, please?
Certainly.
May I? I thought about this in my head earlier today, that allergies are a part of life. I'm allergic to some trees, all grass. Yet, I do not ask the park district to remove all trees and grass to benefit me. I do understand that she feels that going into a place is what's, level of expectation, okay? But Geneva Commons has been pet-friendly for sixteen years. It's public knowledge. Anyone who shops at Geneva Commons knows that pets are allowed there. So, I do believe that there is a certain amount of expectation, or level of expectation, that if you choose to shop in a store at Geneva Commons, that you may come in contact with another dog. And there's, on the doors of each of the participating retailers, there are stickers that say whether or not they are pet-friendly or not. As far as behavior of dogs, again, going back to Kathy Charhat, in sixteen years, including this one woman that brought the ordinance to her attention, there's been four. That's a lot of shoppers over the course of sixteen years that have been in and out of Geneva Commons. I know for, from our standpoint, Wet Nose is a company, when we're promoting shop with your pet, we're very diligent about making sure that people know that your dog needs to be on leash, they need to be well-behaved, and you need to be potty-prepared. It says so on our website. It also says so on our flyers that we promote, and it says so also on the Geneva Commons website, too. Yes, can there be one person, two people, that ruin it for everybody else, but that's how it is with everything in life. So, I'd like to hopefully have a little bit more faith in our humanity, that we're gonna be well-behaved and take well-behaved pets and not ruin it for everybody else.
The requirements, by the way, for police, and probably for every lease we've been a part of, and for most reasonable establishments, are, are really high in terms of liability coverage you have to carry within a store. So, there's coverage within the store, and if you bring a pet in and you happen to be a homeowner, you also have liability coverage through that. You may lose it if your, if your pet does something, but there are layers of liability coverage that are in place for whatever could happen, and then not only related to pets, but other things. things.
Mayhem.
Mayhem, yeah.
Mayhem happens.
So, and that's, the landlords require that, you know, as they should.
And again, I mean, we're not saying that every retailer or business should be forced to allow pets into their establishment. We just want to be able to have the choice to welcome them.
All right, well, that was actually what I was gonna, I was gonna say, it seems, it seems that if we can find a way to change our code so that if a store chooses to be pet friendly, they can, rather than to just change our code saying every place is now, you know, I worry a little bit that if we just remove the ban, people will assume they can bring their dogs wherever they want, and then that forces the business owner to put up a sign saying "dogs not allowed," which is kind of counterproductive. But if we can change it so that if a store chooses to be and they can't put up a sign saying "pet friendly," they can, that might not cause a problem.
I'm sure that there's something, somewhere in the middle that's fair that can appease everybody, and I would agree with that.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have not read the text of our ordinances that would have this, but I'd be more than happy to review that and like Alderman Maladra. Yeah, we wouldn't want to foist being pet friendly, but to look at the language to, you know, if we've got an unenforceable or an ordinance that we don't enforce, might as well remove it. Thank you.
I wish I would've made copies of these. I would've given yet.
Alderman Cummings?
I think if there's been 16 years of almost no problems, I tend to lean towards the, get rid of the overlay that makes the decision saying "pets are not allowed," and leave it up to the shop owners, because there are potentially problems if you get retailers in that focus on certain things. You know, then immediately comes to mind a smoking shop, a cigar shop. You know, the overlay is that there's not smoking in Geneva, but the carve-out, you know, so I think with the pets, don't address the pet issue and leave it up to the shop owner. As a shop owner, I would want to be able to say yes or no to pets, rather than having it dictated to me at the city level. Thank you.
We also know of several people that bring their own pets to work with them, that own their own business, whether they're attorneys. I was just in a resale shop last week, and she had a little dog in her store. She's not a pet facility at all. I clearly was not offended, but I mean, think of all the clients that come into her shop all the time. And technically, she's not allowed to have dogs in her store.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Berger, then McGowan.
Yeah, I agree with what's already been said. I mean, if it's a 40-year-old ordinance, I think times have changed. We need to look closely at it. I'm not saying exactly, I don't know exactly how I would vote, but I would lean toward diving in and giving it some thought. I'm interested how it would apply to restaurants. Would the Kane County Health Department probably would come into play with food establishments?
Yeah, it would not affect any of the county ordinances that are already on the books.
So, we're talking more retail restaurants or old shops owned by businesses, or business owners wanting to bring in their dog to, yep. All right, thanks.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you for coming here tonight and talking about this. I did receive two emails only from residents in my ward, and one, and also my neighbor, Dorothy came and talked to me today. And some people just kind of feel neutral about the situation. One person was, I think it was the same email that Alderman Rodecky read with the dog allergies, but in my, let's see, nearly 13 years of living right across the street from Geneva Commons, and I feel like I'm there for one reason or another, maybe twice a week. It's very rare to actually see a dog in a shop, except for obviously Wet Nose, where dogs should be, and cats. So, I think that the existing city code should include the description of your type of business, along with veterinarians, kennels, and grooming parlors at a minimum. I mean, that's just an obvious, but it's just so that someone else doesn't call and complain, "Oh, you're in violation of the code," you know, even though it's clearly your business. And someone with a pet allergy or an animal aversion wouldn't want to go there anyway. But, so I think that should definitely be specified in the code. And in addition, I think I'm, well, I am leaning towards just hoping that we can modify our existing code and give shop owners the choice. And I just wanted to ask for clarification. Stephanie, do you know that that's allowable or permissible under existing, like Kane County Health Departments? I mean, we know that restaurants, they're probably gonna say no to that, but...
I have not done any research on the matter. I do not know, so I can't answer that.
Okay, well, thank you. I had submitted a question to our code enforcement officer, just trying to get in some of the details of this. I haven't heard back yet, but it was just within the last few days.
Sure.
So, yeah, in my experience, it's very rare that you do encounter a dog in a store, even with the stores that are pet friendly. And people oftentimes just walk their dogs around on the sidewalk outside. So, I think that the fear of someone encountering an aggressive dog, regardless of breed, I think the chances are just as high, or if not higher, walking along the sidewalks throughout the commons.
True.
So, I really feel like that's a bit of an unfounded fear, that you'd go into a store and that a pit bull would bite you. I just feel like that's unrealistic. So, I wouldn't, I guess that wouldn't be a reason for me to, how am I gonna say this? It wouldn't be a reason for me to not consider changing the ordinance, so I'd be open to changing it. And may I ask you, have you been receiving questions and calls from your customers saying, "Oh, my gosh, does this mean that I can't bring my pet to your store? What's going on?" And has that been, what has that been like for you guys?
So, when this all came about about two months ago, we just didn't say anything. We kept it quiet, figured we'll just let it, let the chips fall where they may.
No, we just let a sleeping dog lie.
Yes, 'cause we, we just, at the time, we did. It's true. You know, at the time when this all happened, I was pretty busy with some projects, or just coming off of a major stressful time, and Joe looked at me and he said, "Let it go." He says, "I know you want to go fight this. I know you're gonna like, dig your heels in," he said, "but this is not the time. Just let it go." And he was right, and I just said, "Okay." But in the back of my mind, I thought, "It's not gonna, it's just not gonna go away, because one of our clients, or a handful of our clients, are not gonna be happy about this, and if it's not me saying something, it's gonna be them." So, when we received the email from Susan about the meeting here tonight, I decided, I questioned whether or not I wanted to put it out there or not, but I made a post on what's happening in St. Charles and what's happening in Geneva, and just simply stated that, you know, when we opened up, just as I started with my conversation here, when we opened up 16 years ago in Geneva Commons, I thought it would be a great idea to make it pet friendly, got the management involved, tenants jumped on board, awesome thing, and now, now we can't do it because of this ordinance, the way it reads. And I clearly stated that instead of casting blame, I'm gonna come here and see if we can change it, 'cause it doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make, I think it's old, I think it's not fitting for the times, and it's not business friendly. And businesses need all the help they can get. So, since I've made that post, if you were to look at them, it's like my phone exploded, my computer exploded, my phone exploded, comments, 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 comments. And there were quite a few people that were like, "Does this mean I'm not gonna be able to bring my dog into Wet Nose? I mean, does this mean you guys aren't gonna have adoption events out on your sidewalk anymore?" I mean, you know, so it's just, there's a lot of nervousness there now, too, about how it affects us as a business. So, yes, to answer your question.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to make one more comment, and I guess this is just my personal opinion, but, so I have severe cat allergies. I have a dog, I have a hypoallergenic dog, but we do have a dog at our house. But I've had to go to the emergency room at least twice in my life because I was staying somewhere where there had been a cat, but the carpeting hadn't been changed out, and it basically makes my throat swell shut, if you can imagine that, just from breathing in the dander, even if the cat hadn't been there for a few years. So, I understand that pet allergies are real, but that's never prevented me from, I mean, I can be in a room with a cat, and certainly, you know, if I'm shopping at like a resale store, and I can tell when I'm starting to get cat allergies, 'cause someone who had the clothing had a cat.
Had cats.
And I can tell. Maybe even if they wash it, I can still, I still get that, those symptoms. So, but I understand that. So, I mean, I guess I want to empathize, I'm sorry, having a hard time saying that word right now. I have empathy for people with pet allergies. I understand. It's serious. But at the same time, how would you know if, let's say the entire mall was, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be addressing the chairman. Let's say the entire mall was a no pet zone, but someone with three dogs, or maybe me, maybe I walked into a clothing retailer at the Commons and I tried on a cardigan, and it was the wrong size, so I'm sorry, I don't want this. Would put it back. Now, would the person with a dog allergy, you know, have an attack because, I mean, and it's just an unrealistic thing. I mean, you take the clothing home, you wash it before you wear it. And I think having, so there really, I guess my point is, there really is no way to totally avoid being around animals. So, I just feel like that's sort of another, a bit of an exaggerated, with all due respect to the people that have pet allergies, it's a bit of an exaggerated fear that if there's a dog in a store, that they're gonna have horrible allergies. So, anyway, and I know that might be upsetting for people to hear, but I'm sorry, I guess I just wanted to share my personal, I guess, take of the situation. So, thank you.
And thank you for expressing that, and I really appreciate being so honest about that. You know, going on to the, I know that my exaggeration of allergies with trees and grass is a little extreme, but there are a lot of people out there that have gluten allergies, but we don't force restaurants not to serve pasta. And their peanut allergies are very scary and deadly in some cases, but yet we don't require restaurants not to use peanuts or peanut oil when they're making food. So, I question, you know, where do you draw the line as far as what a person's exposure is? It is almost impossible.
Can I say something? Thanks for not forgetting about the cats.
Sure.
I'm serious.
Yeah, I looked on your website because I saw that dogs and cats are there. And I like Wet Nose, by the way. I've gone there with my dog, and we enjoy visiting. I do want to, peanut allergies are really, that's a life-threatening allergy, so I don't want to...
Sure.
...compare the two. It is really important that places of business not use peanut oil in their cooking and that kind of thing. I think there's a clear division there. But I don't think there are life-threatening dog allergies. So, that's why I feel like it would be okay to permit dogs, you know, business by business, you know, letting businesses decide for themselves. But I just, yeah, I think there is a division there between the pet allergies and peanut allergy. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky, did you have something?
I've already gone once.
Alderman Swanson?
I just wanted to bring it back to the question at issue and just say I'm open to looking into revising the ordinance as stated, and to me, it ought to be the shop holder's choice. There are going to be customers who are not comfortable with animals, and the shop owner ultimately should make that decision, whether or not they want to offend that customer or not. So, I'm open to looking into it. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I found one, just to be fair to the people that have written to me, I found one other letter that I need to read into the record. This is not a, this is reading it into the record, again, from Roxanne and Dick Moy. "I just read a commentary by a local citizen who wants the dog ordinance changed to allow dogs in stores. The person is requesting the public to write to you to modify the ordinance. I am, capital letters, totally for the restriction. It is becoming too common to see non-service dogs in stores. Earlier this year, I was in a Home Goods store, Geneva Commons. A woman was in the store with her dog on a leash. I almost tripped over the extended leash the dog was on as they came around the aisle I was on. The woman was busily talking to several people and not paying attention to her dog. I have no issues with service animals. People love their pets, but their desire to bring dogs into business establishments do infringe on other people's rights, too. There are people who have allergies that pet owners sometimes do not think of. The woman writing indicates her dog likes to go to the mall when she shops. It is inane," I think she meant to say insane, "that people want to take their dog shopping. Pet owners like her should respect the right of shoppers to have to deal with pets in the stores. Please do not change the ordinance. Thank you." And I guess too, you know, I always like to look at the other side of the issue or try to bring something else up. One thing that's interesting, and I don't suggest we do this, I wonder if this was put to a referendum question, how it would go, if we asked all the citizens. I mean, seriously, and I know we don't go by popular opinion here, but I think it's something that's gotta be considered, because I know the comments that I've predominantly heard so far. The second thing, and the point you bring up about, you know, only four incidents reported in 16 years, my guess is there were a whole lot of people that were probably felt, maybe they didn't report them, that maybe they were upset about it. But again, I get the fact that let businesses make their own decisions, but I think that, you know, we're hearing one side of the issue. I think there's probably a little bit more to the other side of the issue from other people if they were here to voice those opinions, because that really is predominantly what I've heard from the people that I've talked to was, "Oh, gosh, we don't want dogs in the stores." And that's what I've heard from people. Not that we vote on popular opinion, not that it's, you know, it's not our responsibility to advocate it to that, but there is another side to the story, too, I think. So, thank you.
Alderman Kilberg, then Alderman Ruby.
Are we talking about dogs and cats only, or just unlimited pets?
I believe we are.
In other words...
According to our ordinance, our ordinance, and not this ordinance in particular, but domesticated animals are considered pets under the city code. That excludes, and I've been requested by several students to allow pigs and everything else, but that's not a domesticated animal.
Well...
So, domesticated animals are defined in our code. So, it's my impression that if this council agrees, or consensus is, that we would bring back an ordinance for discussion, and, you know, a more robust, if possible, discussion or hearing, and then folks who feel contrary to perhaps some of us, then they'd have a chance to speak.
You know, I think we've discussed it this evening. I think that there's an interest. I'd like to give the rest of the community at large an opportunity to share their opinions. I think this has all come on us within the last 24 to 48 hours. So, a lot of times, these things need to percolate in the community a little bit before we get all the feedback. And as Alderman Rodecky points out, both sides, and there, I'm sure there are people that are gonna be very supportive of it, and there are gonna be people that may have objection, but let's give the community an opportunity to share their thoughts in more depth, and maybe we can revisit this at some other point in time.
Alderman Ruby.
Thank you. I also agree. I think this should be the shop owner's choice. And I'm curious, two questions. One, I don't know if this applies or not, but I'm curious if the ordinance should discuss liability. If, I don't know if that, where that falls. I personally think that should fall on the pet owner if there were an issue with liability. So, I don't know how, where that gets, where that comes into play. And then just another thing that came to mind, I'm just curious how many more dogs may come out as a result of this. I've lived in Geneva since before the Commons was built, and I've had dogs my entire life, and I never even knew that the Commons was pet friendly. I knew I could take him to Wet Nose, but I never, I didn't know there were other stores in the Commons that he was allowed in. So, anyway, just something to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, from the dais, before I recognize Alderman McGowan, anyone else who has not yet spoken wish to speak? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. And I just wanted to mention, I do think it's important to remember that service animals are already allowed in stores and restaurants. So, I feel like if we're allowing service dogs, that really doesn't, and then there's one or two other dogs there that another customer brings in, that really doesn't change the environment very much noticeably. So, I just feel like it's important to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Alderman Kilberg, unless anyone else wishes to speak, whereas not yet?
On a very serious note, though, if you check Chicago history, 1945... On a very serious note, though, if you check Chicago history, 1945, there was a goat that appeared at a...
You couldn't keep a straight face when you were...
There was a goat that appeared at a Cub game, and the outcome was not very pleasant, and...
Well, if you're a White Sox fan, it was lovely.
I just thought I'd bring that up.
At the tavern, I know this young lady in the audience wished to...
I want to apologize for being so late.
Well, that's quite all right, we're gonna invite you up to the podium, madam, if I could ask you to state your name?
I'm Susan Kingsfield, I'm kind of the one that started this whole thing.
Susan Kingsfield, Mr. Clerk.
And I'm the troublemaker.
Welcome.
And I'm sorry that I was late, I apologize. Thank you so much for your email, I appreciate it, and Alderman Rodecky, thank you also. I just wanted to respond to, is it Kilberg? Okay. Alderman Kilberg.
It's Alderman Goat.
When I walked in, you were saying to give the community an opportunity. How do we, how do you propose to do that?
Well, I think tonight starts that process, because there are a few people that watch this, and amazingly, we do have the press here this evening, there might be Ms. Shori, will probably have a short article about this, and it's the type of thing that probably The Chronicle likes to write about.
I should add that when I made those posts on social media today, I invited the community to come and voice their opinion, and as you can see...
Well, one day's noticed.
Let's just say it's a Monday, and it's pretty warm, and everybody was watching either CNN or Fox or MSNBC.
Or The Bachelorette.
And these things sometimes take a couple of weeks to percolate in the community before everybody's in tune with what's happening or what's being discussed here at City Hall. So that's all I'm saying, is that just because it may appear on social media, or somebody Facebooks or puts an article out, that immediately everyone in Geneva knows all about it, I don't know what your experiences are, but mine are, that sometimes these things take a couple of two weeks before everybody's sorted and tuned, and those people that have a side or an issue, a voice as it relates to a topic like this, they'll show up if they're motivated either for or against, and usually you get the loudest voices on both sides that show up here. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, I just didn't know how we would, how that was gonna work.
I think the fact that you're here tonight, and you're talking about it, and the council's talking about it, and the press is here, and it's on TV, and they can watch it for a week on Channel 10, that's the start.
Well, I really appreciate you giving us this forum to do this, thank you.
And that'll give us some time to listen to some other people, ask their opinion, too, because we represent, it's not our opinion alone, it represents the constituency. So I think it's important to hear, you know, all those people that walk their dogs on East Side Drive, I'll be out and talking to them about it, see how important it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. I sense that we have consensus to direct staff to bring a revised ordinance back to the committee at the whole for discussion, and we will, of course, publicize that discussion through not only our social media outlets, but of course, through other means, too. Is that a fair assessment? Stephanie, are you clear? Okay. Anything else, folks, you'd like to share?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience tonight for new business or public comment? From the dais. Yes, Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. I just wanted to ask where we were at as far as the discussion on creating a sidewalk bank, that was something that we've brought up from time to time, I guess, and I wanted to know if anything was in the works with that, or is that something that's a planned discussion for some future meeting?
True.
The best place will be when we do our November strategic planning, to talk about it then, and then we can talk about what that would entail, and getting it into the budget, and those types of things. So currently, there are no, there's nothing in progress for that.
Okay, so we'll just wait till November, it wouldn't be good to bring it up sooner? For some, you're like, at a...
I think it's better to bring it up at the strategic planning, because that's more of a long-term vision, and then we can get all the council's discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Stephanie.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Cummings?
As most of you know, if you've read your emails today, this is my last meeting. We did sell, well, we will be selling our house within the next couple of days, and the ordinance dictates that if I don't live in the ward, then I cannot represent the ward. I want to say I have enjoyed, most of the time, working with all of you, and the times that I haven't enjoyed it has been a learning experience, and part of the process that I do respect, and I do encourage, and for all the people that are watching, I would say the same thing that a lot of people that were at the dais said earlier tonight, get involved in the community. And if it's not at the city level, because perhaps it seems contentious, or not at the school board level, because absolutely, that's contentious, perhaps it's something easier. Maybe it's library, maybe it's parks, maybe it's Parks Foundation, maybe it's one of the 501(c)(3)'s in the community. There's a lot of ways that people can become involved in Geneva, and continue to make the town that Geneva is, and continue to improve it, and it takes that engaged citizenry. So thank you, all of you, the ones that I've argued with a lot, disagreed with 100% of the time, I still appreciate, I appreciate the back and forth that we had, so thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for years ago, taking the chance and appointing me. I don't know if you'll look back and say that was a good idea or not, but thank you for that. Thank you very much, all of you.
I believe that means Don is treating. So is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No.
Oh, forgive me, Alderman Burkhardt, forgive me.
Alderman Cummings, when I got elected, you were Mary McKittrick, and her wisdom sat me next to you, and I heard that that was something she often did with new aldermen, that you got the newbies, and I couldn't have asked for a better alderman to sit by. You were kind and encouraging, and answered all my questions, and you treated me as an equal right from the start, which I didn't know much, and that meant the world to me, so thank you for that. Since then, we, I don't always agree with you, I don't always vote the same, but I always love hearing how you get to the point of your vote. I love how you explain your thought process, it inspires me to turn things around in my brain, and we've been very lucky to have you for these years, and it's a loss to the community, and I just want to thank you for your service, and thank you for being a friend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I echo what you say, Alderman Burkhardt. You know, one thing, Don, you know, I'm a very linear thinker, I kind of vault to what I think are logical conclusions, which means I shut out some of the creative thinking in between in that process, and some of the creativity that you come, you know, that you brought to this, and the way that you look at solutions to problems, and, you know, I don't want to say thinking outside the box, 'cause it's more than that. You look at things in a different way, and as Alderman Burkhardt just said, it kind of compelled me to look at things differently, and to stop and listen, rather than, you know, shut out the possibilities of how else we may attack a particular problem. So, yeah, you have just been an asset to this council. Personally, I've benefited from, you know, your knowledge, also your background in finance, you know, I mean, how the city has benefited from, you know, what you bring to the table from your professional experience is something that, you know, we would've paid a lot of money to find somebody to bring that to us, so it was much appreciated, and whatever you choose to do in the next chapter, good luck, and thank you for your service.
If there's no other comments, no new business, all entertainment motion to adjourn? Alderman Marks makes the motion, Alderman Cummings makes the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.